Welcome to the April 22 Board of Library Trustees regular meeting. We start by doing a roll call. And I can, Kim, do you want, do you do that?
Sure, I'll do that. Sharon Moreau.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Felga.
There.
Trustee Joshi. Trustee Patti.
Here.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the consent calendar, which has two items on it. One is the approval of the minutes and the other is a request appropriation of donated funds. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we vote on the consent agenda. I guess we need to ask for public comments now. So do you want to do the spiel, Kim?
Sure, I can do that. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via zoom.gov. Joining a Zoom is preferred because there's no lag time. You are connected live to the meeting in real time. The meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey, but it has approximately a 10-second delay. And on Comcast Channel 25, up to a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. You'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, which is toll-free. Then enter meeting ID 1603013357. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, raise your hand using Zoom. Or if you're connected by phone, dial star 9 to raise your hand, then star 6 to unmute yourself. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. We ask that the public commenters turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected by phone, as any background noise will interfere with the broadcast.
Okay. No.
I don't see anybody raising their hands, but you know, I see Joshi is in like, Adam. He's in like view mode.
Ah, great. Marish.
Well, I see his name's in view mode. Wait, where'd it go?
There it is.
Okay, well, I've been waiting for a while, I guess.
Oh, I think, I think you got added through the public link, apparently. But we don't have any, anybody raising their hand to speak, so no comments.
Okay, so just to fill you in, Harith, we're, we're about to vote on the consent calendar, which is I-
I've been watching everything.
Oh, okay.
Could see myself, but that frequently happens. Don't see yourself, that's fine.
Okay, so we have, we have a movement second, and now we're ready to vote. So you, you want to take the vote, shall you?
Yes. Sharon Moreau.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Felga.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Patti.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. And now we move on to public comments. I, I don't think you have to read, you just-
A whole spiel again.
Again, but we can just wait a few minutes for, to see if there's anybody else, anybody who would like to speak at the meeting.
This time, we don't have any members of the public.
Okay, so we move on. And you will notice, we're at item, agenda item number three. You'll notice that we have removed the distinction between old business and new business. As we were planning the agenda, we all realized that it's such a sort of artificial distinction, and the other boards and commissions don't use it, city council doesn't use it. And so Ingo was able to get the city to take, take it out in the template. So now we just have items on there, because things, there was such a gray area. It just didn't make much sense. So we move forward with a streamlined and more simplified agenda template. So number three is to receive the quarterly report on the Library Trust Fund.
Sure, I'll give you a quick overview. And this was a good example of the kind of report where you wonder, is this old business? Because we've had the trust fund for a long time? Or is it new business? Because it's a new report, because it's for this past quarter? But anyway, so just as a reminder, the trust fund quarterly report is sort of a, it's a report on, on how we're doing with our trust fund budget. So every year, you approve appropriations to the budget. And then we like to show you each quarter what new funds have come in, what we've spent the funds on, what the current balance of the trust fund is, and then answer any questions. It used to be just completely a, a numbers report, like the financial reports in the back. But then we realized that trustees didn't always know all the good things that we were doing with the funding that was coming from the trust fund. So we added this narrative component. So anyway, so you'll see on packet page 10, the overview. And this is for the trust fund that's maintained by the City of Monterrey. The revenue that was recorded as coming into the account was 85,651. And year-to-date, we've collected 185,204. And I'll just point out that that 85,651 is monies that were deposited into the city managed account. But the monies might have come in, in December. But then by the time the finance department was taking donations again and so forth, you know, we deposited them. So that doesn't mean that on January 1st through March 31st, these gifts were actually received. They were just deposited at that time. And as far as just expenditures went, we've spent 79,305 during the quarter. And year-to-date, we've spent 143,356. What are our balances? Well, we have a Bookmobile reserve, and that's currently at 168,823. And that is a bequest from Mrs. Oler. And it was donated to Monterey Public Library. It's held in the trust fund, and it has earnings. And then the trust fund, right now, the balance is, as of 31st, 440,702. And then total equities are 609,930. So I won't read you every chart. The next chart shows you revenue that was put towards, well, it shows your overall budget that has been adjusted, and then any monies that have come in and what they were from. And then in expenditures, we show what you had approved as expenditures and the adjustments to that, and then what we actually spent during the course of the quarter. Did anybody have any questions?
I just had one question on the total trust fund equities. So you have, you have the total trust fund, the 440. Okay, so that, so the, the 440 and the 169 added together. So you added the Bookmobile Reserve, and that gives you the total.
What packet page was that? I can't find it.
10 and 11.
Yeah, packet page 10 is where it shows how much is in the Bookmobile Reserve. Now I have my glasses on.
Where is the 400 and some thousand dollar figure that you were referring to? What packet page?
Sure, page 10.
The total trust fund other, on the second little chart.
Oh, okay. And, and that includes the Bookmobile grant?
Well, the Bookmobile, that gives you the 600 that's underneath.
The Bookmobile's 160.
That, okay.
Can you see that now?
Oh.
I'm sharing.
Thank you.
That's okay, Joshi, I have the chart in front of me. Thank you.
Good, there you have it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I thought it would be quicker.
Yes. So highlights, I guess, that I could point out on packet page 11, you'll see that under expenditures, towards the bottom of the page, I show library materials. So the adjusted library materials budget was 52,700. And every penny of that is a penny that was donated by our community. So, so those are monies that have come in through the friends or through separate donations. And I have another $28,000 to appropriate into there. So we actually are doing really well with the materials budget.
What page was that on, Inga?
That's on packet page 11. So thanks to, I mean, our, our average expenditures in the past four years was $173,000. So, but considering that we started with nothing, this is pretty good.
So, so the, the budgeted amount was 52.7?
The adjusted budget amount.
Okay. And we've spent 11,700 of it the first three months of this year.
Correct.
Which is the third quarter.
Okay, so we, so through three quarters, we've spent almost 37,000. And that, and that over the 43 is where you get the statement that we've used up 84%.
Bob, if I could, I think you're on one line too high. If you look under library materials.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. But the principle that I was using is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 52.7, and we've spent, well, that means to date, we've only spent about a little over half of it.
Well, yeah, we spent, so the 27,000 is what we spent so far for the fiscal year.
Yeah, and we were three quarters of the way through the fiscal year.
Right.
So, so we're way behind in our spending. I mean, normally you'd think, well, it should be 75%. If we're three quarters of the way through the year, you'd figure we'd be spend, have spent about three quarters, right?
Right, except in this case, I think some of the donations didn't come in at the beginning until later in the fiscal year. So you didn't really know how much you had to spend, you know, until you received it.
Right, because remember we-
We have 20 some thousand that is budgeted to spend between now and June 30th.
Well, because we started with zero, and the monies have come in gradually over time, as Jim mentioned. And we've been having you appropriate funds almost every meeting, and they go into the trust fund. What we don't spend in one fiscal year, we can then roll over into the next fiscal year, because this is our trust fund. But as far as how much we've spent, so we have a limited capacity in that we have one person selecting materials when we normally have five. We have one person spending 20 hours a week ordering materials and doing other things as well. And then we only have a 20-hour-a-week position cataloging when we used to have 1.75. So we're not as, as speedy as we were when we were fully staffed. And any other comments?
Now, I was also going to ask, looking at the, under expenditures there, for example, it shows budgeted almost 14,000 for furniture and kitchen. And we've spent zero. So does that mean we have almost $14,000 sitting there waiting to be used for something?
It was actually donated by the friends for replacing some furnishings in the youth area. And we haven't been able to work on that project, because we're so short-staffed. So it's sitting there as a little nest egg for when we have the capacity again to purchase the new furnishings.
But the key thing is, it's not use it or lose it. You said any of these things that we don't completely spend can roll over to the next fiscal year.
Right, because, well, I have to, I have to request that the council reappropriate them, but that's a possibility. I mean, because it's in our trust fund. So it's not as if the money is going away. It's in our trust fund, and then we can ask that it be re-appropriated for the next year.
See, my problem is, I'm used to being the director of a counseling center. And when the university fiscal year was coming to an end, everybody was scurrying around trying to spend what we had been allocated that year. Marcia knows how that works. And, you know, you try to spend it up, because if you don't, then it's use it or lose it, and you don't have it to start the following year.
And that's how the general fund works. And so normally, we would be scurrying around trying to spend our general fund. But of course, we don't have very much in the general fund this year, so it's not such a concern.
That's, that's what's so nice about donation, really. So I had a question about the California History Room personnel. That's 91% gone. So that was, that was Sean, or?
So Sean's being, Sean's being paid out of a couple of accounts. He's being paid out of the general fund for part of his hours. And he's being paid out of the California History Room trust fund account for his other hours. And so I've been working with the finance department to try to make sure that they've got it all coded correctly. Yeah. But, so that's another thing that's unusual about this year's trust fund is that we have a number of different pockets of funds for staff, because we started off with so few staff positions, and the city wasn't able to help us with all of the staffing that we needed. They did what they could, but so we also had donated funds. These are actually funds that had come from a donor for a different purpose. And I went back to them, and, and they said, yes, please use it for that. So, yeah, so we've got funds for our RFID project, which we'll be talking about later, for personnel for that. And we have teen services money. And we have youth personnel as well as California History Room. So that's how we've been helping augment the general fund budget. So then, I think the good, really interesting part of this report is the report on the activities during the third quarter in fund development. And I would like to ask Mary Jane to talk a little bit about that, if you're okay with that. Mary Jane?
Mary Jane, I think you're muted.
Oh, now we can hear you.
Okay. So, yes, we're chugging along. We've had pretty continuous moment, momentum since initiating the campaign in September at the end of last year. Announcing it, then had a good year end. The events of early in this quarter, in February, the State of the Library event and the chocolate and wine event, we both, we used both of those to our advantage by making sure that we heightened public awareness in advance and did a little bit of, did as much personalized communication in advance with our donors, so that we made the, the most of those events as we could, since we're all on Zoom. It, I think that both events and the general knowledge of the library being closed, the city's plight have, there's been enough public attention and awareness that's been built up. And I think it's filtered out, at least somewhat, that we're in a campaign mode and fundraising. The Friends and Foundation have been more, more visible, I think. So then, after those two events, we rolled into the spring appeal, which was the first time that for our entire donor base, we were really very clear that we were in campaign mode. In the fall, we kind of hinted about it, because we were waiting for the, we didn't have a grand announcement, but we had a public announcements in February. So Inga had the really good idea, I think, of the enclosure, the rack size enclosure in the mailing, which I think is a little harder for people to throw away than a normal piece of paper. So it might be out, out on kitchen tables and motivating people. We've had, although returns were expected, returns began only in, at the very end of March, and we're discussing quarter three today. The good news is that there are more gifts than ever before, and they're of larger size than, than ever before. It's, it's not uncommon to get a $500 gift for the, for the first time since I've been there. And we've gotten a couple thousand dollar gifts. Yesterday, we got a $2,000 gift that was earmarked for the endowment, but I'm quite sure it was stimulated by the campaign mailing. Anyway, got good momentum going there, and the trick going forward will be that we, at the end of the year, will look forward to MC Gives into a year-end campaign. But the only other activity that we really have to keep us going till then is one-on-one Zoom meetings with either Inga and a donor, sometimes with me there, sometimes not, or Bill, Bill W., who's really been fantastic as chair of the Fund Development Committee and is solicited one of the major gifts that we got earlier this year, $10,000 gift from Ted Balistrari, that's going to be made payable over two years in time. But anyway, so this is the, the challenge is keeping our eye on the ball and trying to keep the same high rate of raising funds going, even though we can't go back to some of the bigger donors that easily. So anyway, anything else about quarter three? I guess you can see that the endowment fund has exceeded $350,000. It's about, well, on April 7th, when I wrote the report, it was nearing $360,000. $360,000, so it's good to see that that has bounced back. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions, but, yes, Jim?
I just, there were a couple, just for the record, I think corrections.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I was trying to, I was trying to forget those.
Very good. Do you want to do those, or you want me to?
Let's see, one of them was that on packet page 13, fundraising initiatives, and there's a subheading midway down the page, fundraising initiatives and projects during quarter two, the packet says, and of course, I did mean three, and Jim caught that, so thanks very much. And then- And then, less trivially, on packet page 12, in the little grid-like summary that summarizes unrestricted and restricted funds and total funds raised by the Friends and Foundation, the Trust Fund, and the Endowment Fund. The figure at the far right, the total for the Trust Fund was inadvertently listed as $18,569. And it really should, you should drop that one. This should have been $8,500. And I think there was a third thing, Jim, but I don't remember that error. I've suppressed that one.
No, I don't think that, the third thing that I'd ask about was not an error, just a clarification. So you're fine. Those were the two corrections I wanted to get on the record.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. I just wanted to clarify the, the numbers that, Mary Jane, the numbers you mentioned with regard to the Endowment Fund, right about in the middle of packet page 13. And it, like you said, it's almost 360,000, up from 345,000, 346,000. That increase of about $13,000 occurred between December 31st and April 7th?
December 31st and March 31st.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no. Yes, actually, I was checking the day, I will say April 7th.
Okay, whatever, it's that three, little over three-month period of time that the, the gain was realized.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or comments? Okay. No, Jim?
Not a question, but a comment, just my compliments to Inga and Mary Jane. It seems like we've accomplished a lot in terms of fundraising, and I think we've switched gears considerably from where we were a couple of years ago in terms of the orientation of our fundraising activity, and it seems to be paying off. So, well done. Thank you.
Yes, and we'll, we'll see you again in another quarter. Right, so you're on the hook for the next three months. Just go out there and do good things, right?
That's what Mary Jane does, so we're very grateful that she's part of our team.
I'm, I love it, and I, I'll just make the remark that it is so gratifying to see. One more thing about the Spring Appeal, people giving again who haven't given since 2017. My favorite was somebody who hadn't given since 2011 recently. So these people who are coming back into the fold, as well as brand-new donors giving 2,000, well, there's really just one, but brand-new donor. I think I might have talked about this last time to some of you, 2,000 dollars right out of the box, having attended Chocolate and Wine. So it's really happy.
Yeah, and yeah, the other piece is that the Friends and Foundation did that full-page spread on the, on the campaign. And I think that you'll probably see some results in the Monterey County Weekly. And it was, you know, nicely done, and so you'll probably see some activity there.
Hoping, yeah.
Yeah, I would think. Okay. All right, so the next one we have is, we'll approve the Trust Fund budgets for fiscal year '22 and '23.
Yes. And so I sent out the spreadsheet with the proposed amounts just recently, so it'd be great if Kim could bring it up on her screen. If not, we'll ask Harish. There we go. Great. So just as I proposed a general fund budget to you, and then you approved it, and then I took it to the, or submitted it to the city to be folded into their budget process. We do something similar with the Trust Fund. So in the city charter, it says that there is a trust fund, and all the various donations and monies that come into the library, except for fines, go into the trust fund. And as you know, we're in the midst of a big campaign for the trust fund. And then we identify how much of that fund we want to budget and for what specific purposes. And so I propose those to you. You let me know what you think about that, and then it goes to the city, and that gets folded into their budget process. So that's what we have before us. So the first, the top part of the screen shows anticipated revenues. So we anticipate a certain amount in interest, and we anticipate a certain amount in fees that we will collect. And this is for archival duplication and also for operating our photocopy machines. And then sale of promotional items, and that is the little store that we have in the library where we sell mugs and tote bags, and also sell flash drives and things that, earbuds, things that people might need when they're using our computers. And then it estimates contributions. So since this is revenue, the tradition has always been to underestimate revenue because you don't want to anticipate more revenue than you're able to take in. So even though our contributions show 153,241 in the current year, I'm still proposing a modest amount, 95,000. We could increase that, but it's, we just like to be cautious. Then, under expenditures, conversely, we always anticipate a larger expenditure than we wind up expending. As, as Bob had pointed out, we were behind in our expenditures when looking at the expenditure side of things. But here are the things that I'm proposing that we request funds for. So you'll know from when we were looking at the reorg of the library, I suggested that we have a, and because we're, we're struggling as a city financially, I am being very modest. So we propose a 20-hour-a-week Fund Development Officer position, and then 10 hours a week of admin support for that position. We would love to have a full-time position again, and if somebody waved their magic wand and said it was possible, we would propose that instead, but right now, we're just proposing part-time. Then we received from, from MC Gives, funds to go towards a children's librarian. And so part of that falls in the current fiscal year, part of it falls in the new fiscal year. And so we're requesting $21,000 for a children's librarian that would be part-time also, that would be hourly. And then requesting $6,300 to supplement the local history librarian. That would be for five hours a week, because currently on the books, for the first six months, it would be a 20-hour-a-week position. And then we'll be done with our RFID tagging project, so not requesting any funds for that. And since we have a request in for reference teen librarian in the general fund, we're not requesting any funds for that. So that's what we have as requests for staff positions, for staff hours. And then there's a whole breakdown for printing and postage. And most of that is for publicity and for fund development. And then in the general fund budget, we have very little for any kind of program supplies. So we're asking for, or we asked the Friends and Foundation for teen, for program supplies. So we're allocating $1,000 for teens, for youth, we're asking for $1,000, and also for bookmobile. And then we have some winter reading funds. And then scrolling down the page, if we heard, thank you. We're looking at, so nothing for training and conferences. But for contracts, we have the homework help amount and lift rides. We don't need to put anything in there for that. And I think there's a typo in there. I don't remember the RFID project requiring $1,200, so I'll have to double-check on that one. Sorry. Then for programs, and this is usually where we bring in professionals, we have another whole chunk of monies that we're planning to appropriate for this coming fiscal year. But then we're not matching a similar amount next year because we're appropriating the trust, the wish list money that we received from the Friends and Foundation, that we don't know how much they're going to give us in the following year. So that's what those amounts are. And then for collection development, we, there's that $80,000 you see there. And then next year, we have some MC Gives money, because that's being split over two fiscal years. We have some Friends and Foundation donation from the wish list. And then we have some miscellaneous that we're going to allocate. And so we'll start off next year with $30,000 for collections. So the following year, as I mentioned briefly, is pretty sparse because, again, we sort of wait. We can do a mid-year adjustment, but also we wait because we're not sure until closer to the beginning of the year, the next year, how much money we've taken in from gifts and things, and then, and what to allocate those monies for. And, oh yes, down at the very bottom, there's that equipment money that Bob had wondered, or trustee Patty had wondered, do you have about $14,000 you haven't spent on equipment? And there it is in this year's budget, and we're planning to carry it over for next year. And I wonder what's the big discrepancy between next year and the subsequent year? Could it really be that we're going to operate at, you know, $70,000 less? Not really, but it's, we don't know what kind of gifts have come in.
Does some of this also depends on the city's general fund budget recovering?
Exactly.
So I know before the fiscal crisis hit, some of the trustees were very concerned about the way we were spending down the trust fund and hoping that we could, you know, figure out ways that we didn't have to do that. And so I think that's still very real, that we don't want to be spending trust fund money when the city, if the city is recovering and can put back some of the, some of the cuts, it would be very nice to be able to, you know, use that for discretionary things and not for basic needs. So that's part of, that's part of this game, this dance you do where you don't know how much money you're getting, and you also don't know how much, I mean, how many donations you're getting, but you also don't know how much is coming from the city. You, you have a pretty good idea for '22, but maybe not '23 for a while.
Exactly, exactly. And I think it's pretty consistent that the headings that are in bold on the left-hand side are monies that are coming out of the trust fund that balance? Or what would that be? What other monies that have come in over time that were just, hadn't been allocated? And then the things that are not in bold are particular gifts that we receive that are restricted for that purpose. And sorry, somebody, was it Harish that said he had a question, or who had a?
I was wondering if the items in bold are the sum total of the items below, but it doesn't seem like that.
Yes, that's what that is.
Okay, well then, look at this item 4220. The one in bold is 3,500, and the sum total below is 1,235,200.
Oh, you're right.
And the same thing with this 4240, if you take that 11,950, add the numbers below it, they go in excess of that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I wasn't sure if that's what they were meant to be, or?
Okay.
So, so the way this is written, that the total that Harish was talking about is at the top?
Yeah.
Or at the, so it's at the top of the category, yeah. So they, you're right, many of those don't add up the way they should.
We can blame it on Excel.
No, you have to blame it on a fatigued library director.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why, I mean, it applies in a number of the categories, but why, for example, if we look at 4254, collection development?
Yes.
Why is the difference between this past year, now I expect it to be less next year, but why is it so drastically different from almost 81,000 down to 30,000?
Okay, so when, when we started the year, we rolled over $25,000 in gifts that we hadn't spent the previous year, so.
You're talking about the current fiscal year.
The current fiscal year, right. So we had $25,000, actually, I think it came from the April wishlist of the previous year. Anyway, so we started with that, and then over time, we've received gifts as we've let the community know that we need funds for, for materials. And so the Friends and Foundation have given us some gifts, and then we've received some separately. And so that's how we, this amount has grown. In fact, so for.
The 80,000?
Correct. Great. So we would love to have more than the 30, but right now, we have 19,902 that we received from MC Gives that we're allocating for next year. And we have 5,700 that we just received in the wish list from the Friends, and some miscellaneous gifts for collections that we want to appropriate for next year's, to start off next year's trust fund budget.
So anything above and beyond those three figures, the 19, the 5, 57, and the 43, which add up to the 30,000? Anything that's received beyond that for the purpose of developing our collection would have the net effect of increasing the 30,000?
Exactly, and what we don't spend this year, as I mentioned previously, will reappropriate for next year. So any of that 80,000 that doesn't get spent, we can roll over.
So that would, that would increase the 30,000 also. If we don't spend all of the 80,000, then that rolls over into, and adds into the 30.
Yes.
And how much of the 80 have we spent so far?
We've spent 27,000, I believe we said, right?
That means we have over $50,000 of the 80 ready and waiting to roll over and add into the 30.
Right, but we do need to pay our database contracts. And so databases come out of our, the same fund, the subscription fund. And so some of that will be spent towards our databases.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, I think this is an item that we vote on, but before we do, we should ask for public comment.
Sure. Sure. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're connected by phone at 833-568-8864, then please dial nine to raise your hand. We don't have anybody.
Okay, so, thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve. Harish?
Are we gonna be voting on the numbers as shown here at the bottom? Because we, we need to adjust some of them.
Right, I think as amended, you could make a motion as amended because the totals need to be fixed up.
Right.
Any other, any other changes? Anyone suggesting Jim?
Yes, because some of these numbers don't quite make sense to me either. If we could at our next board meeting have an updated version of this where the numbers seem to add up a little more coherently than this one does, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and then take out the RFID project if it's not there and.
In fact, if I, if I could, just to ask a question in addition to my comment, under the 4203 printing and postage, is where the numbers particularly don't add up. I'm guessing there may be a separate object account for supplies that a lot of these would be under instead of under printing and postage. So that, that's, that's the one that throws me the most in terms of the numbers not seeming to add up. They add up to a lot more than 15,000. And that, that's why I'm thinking maybe there's an object account that's not shown here.
Right, there should be the number 4205, which starts on the line that says archival processing, $178, 500 and 500. And something happened to that right there.
And another, another subtotal would then be in there.
Correct.
Is there any reason why we don't request that we look at this with the corrections next time and actually vote to approve it next time rather than now?
Well, I'll have to check with our finance director. He basically, our interim finance director, he said that he wasn't really concerned about the trust fund numbers because of they're pretty separate from the general fund budget. But I'll have to double check with him. We might need to have a special meeting. And I'm sorry that there's so many errors on this document.
One more question.
Yes.
You had said, Inga, some time ago about the leasing cost or whatever, the contract cost for the machines that will do this. Is that what the RFID thing might be showing, the 2,000? Because you said that we have to keep paying for those machines or the lease until it runs out.
Oh, yeah, self-checks, you mean?
So, right, so, so the self-checks are, that's in our general fund budget.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you for thinking of that.
So I get it. Good, Jim.
Can I make a suggestion that we approve this in concept so that Inga can proceed to enter it into the system? But subject to our review at the next meeting, our kind of final approval, since we're a little uncomfortable with some of the numbers at this point?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea. And so I approve the principle. So I'm entertaining a motion for, Jimmy, you wanna make a motion?
Sure, if, if that sounds acceptable to the group, I would gladly move to give conceptual approval to the proposed trust fund budgets as presented. But requesting a follow-up clarification of some of the numbers for final approval at our next meeting.
I'd be happy to second that. Any, any comment or questions on that?
The additional part of Jim's motion falls under the provide direction to staff title of this agenda item. So I, I think we're not really changing it a whole lot. We're just asking through that for the further clarification.
Okay, so we're ready to vote?
Okay, Moreau.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Olga.
Yes.
Doshi?
Yes.
Patti.
Yes.
You're unanimous and we move on. The next piece is the report on potentially charging non-resident fees for Monterey Public Library cards from the ad hoc benchmarking library services and cost committee, which you have in your packet, that's the next item. And Jim, do you wanna speak to this one?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I'd like to, it's a fairly long and detailed and complicated report, so I'm not gonna go into a huge amount of detail on it, but I did think it'd be worthwhile to perhaps give a little context on why we prepared the report and the process the committee used in preparing the report and then highlight the recommendations and kind of where from here. The context of the report in terms of why we prepared it starts, of course, with the pandemic and that decimated city finances and effect on the MPL budget as well as all city departments. And that the city was looking for ways to increase revenues and cut costs to try to mitigate those reduced service levels. And as further background, the funding committee, which was Harish and I back last spring and summer, prepared an overview analysis of many potential ideas for revenue ideas and cost savings, including a limited review of the non-resident fee question. And at that point, that committee recommended against the non-resident fees. But the city manager, Hans Unzler, expressed some concern that the library wasn't really producing much revenue and, and really never has, as far as I know, except when we did charge those fees. And he was also concerned that the, the review that we did, that our funding committee did, which he took a look at, was kind of a quick and dirty analysis, which it was, that's a valid comment about it. So anyway, he suggested that it would be worthwhile to have a more thorough analysis of this non-resident fee issue, which has been kicking around for a number of years. And kind of, I think, amplifying that concern is that the Monterey Public Library was actually the first library after the pandemic to open sidewalk service here in Monterey County. I believe that's correct. Certainly one of the first, if not the very first. And even today, we still have a lot more hours of service in our sidewalk service than other libraries do. So because of that, in, especially in the early days of when we started the sidewalk service, we had a much, much larger percentage of non-resident circulation than we normally did. It was actually definitely a majority of the circulation, which also got the city manager's attention and understandably so. So for a number of reasons like that, the city manager suggested that, that the library board took a much more thorough look at that. And I dare say we have taken a very thorough, we look at this issue, we spent several months and many, 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 many hours preparing this report, which I hope covers it as thoroughly as I think we could reasonably have done. So anyway, the, the benchmark committee was already reviewing a lot of statistical data when we were comparing with other cities. And so Chair Mora tasked our committee with this additional assignment of doing this non-resident fee analysis. So the process the committee used, I'll kind of summarize. We started out by looking at the non-resident use of not of the Monterey Public Library, but we also looked at the use of other libraries by Monterey residents, which is an issue that's often, I think overlooked in this whole discussion. So we tried to give some equal weight to that question as well as the non-resident use of MPL. And we did find that in the pre-pandemic year, and, and we, I should mention that we focused all of our attention in this analysis to the pre-pandemic year. Because we thought that after the pandemic, you know, patron use is different, the budget had been slashed. Just nothing seemed normal this past year. So we thought it really, it didn't make much sense to look at a long-term policy issue in terms of the most recent, very abnormal time. So all of the analysis in this report are virtually all focuses on the year prior to the pandemic, either the calendar year or the fiscal year. So anyway, going back to the, the non-resident use of MPL, we found that 46% of the circulation at MPL and in the pre-pandemic year was to non-residents. And the primary jurisdictions that the, those non-resident circulation items came from were Seaside, Pacific Grove and Marina. And there's a lot more information in the report about that. But in terms of just kind of a quick overview, the Monterey use, use of other libraries was also significant. And we found that about 31%, as many items were checked out by Monterey residents at other local libraries as were checked out at MPL. So there's a significant benefit to Monterey residents to having access to other libraries. As well as there's obviously a benefit to other, the residents of other cities abusing our library. And the more we reviewed this, I think we started thinking of it as a system. It's actually a statewide system. And the state provides incentives for libraries and cities to not charge and disincentives if you do charge. And, and I think, you know, the, the very fact that it is a two-way street and the Monterey residents benefit as well as the residents of other cities indicates that it is a two-way street. And that we, you know, kind of getting ahead of myself here, but we did kind of feel that the overall benefit of keeping that system going outweighed the fact that in fact, MPL provides more service to other city residents than our residents receive from other city libraries. So it's not a complete quid pro quo, but we thought it was still an important balance that is worth keeping. Anyway, after we finished looking at the non-resident use of MPL and resident, Monterey residents' use at other libraries, we looked at the history of non-resident fees in other California public libraries. And did fair amount of research on that. And we were only able to identify 11 public libraries that have ever charged a non-resident fee for, for a card. And seven of those 11 libraries terminated their fees. Sometimes it was after just a couple of years and sometimes it was after as much as 20 years or I think one even longer than that. But at this point, we are only aware of four public libraries that are currently charging non-resident fees. And they generate a range from $300 a year to $36,000 a year in revenue with an average of about $13,000 a year for those, each of those four libraries. So it's not a large amount. One of them was, like I say, 36,000. And we also, one of the libraries that used to charge, of course, is Monterey Public Library. And we charged a fee from 1992 to 2006. And there's quite, quite a bit of detail in the report about the history of that. But kind of the bottom line is that during that period, the revenue was about $40,000 a year. And a lot of that came from a contract with Pacific Grove where the city basically contracted with the City of Monterey to, to, for that, roughly that amount of money, not the 40,000, but it was around 20,000 to cover all of the PG residents' use of MPL. And that was kind of related to, we had a computer system agreement with them and this was kind of a natural outgrowth out of that. But anyway, for a number of reasons, those non-resident fees were eliminated by the City of Monterey in 2006. And we haven't had any fees of that type in the last 15 years. So the next step we took in our analysis was to look at the status quo of not charging non-resident fees at Monterey Public Library. And in particular, we spent some time trying to determine what is the incremental or the marginal cost to Monterey Public Library to provide service to non-resident cardholders? In other words, if we didn't serve any non-resident cardholders, what savings would there be to the library and to the city? And in that analysis, we found, we couldn't, had a couple, trouble coming up with a really solid number for that, but we felt comfortable that it was less than $50,000 a year. And a lot of that was for the staff to process books in and out. And that cost, of course, will be greatly reduced once the RFID is implemented. So, you know, kind of our bottom line perception of that is that it's really not costing us that much to serve non-residents. Cause a lot of the costs we would have, we would have anyway, even if we weren't serving the non-residents. So if you look at it from an incremental cost point of view, it's, it's really not that expensive to be doing it. So the next step, of course, was to look at the real issue, which is the analysis of charging non-resident fees. And again, there's quite a long discussion of that in the report and I won't go into too much detail on that. But as indicated, we thought, you know, probably a reasonable number to focus on, if we did charge a non-resident fee would be about $100 a year with similar exemptions and discounts as we previously did when we did charge 15 years ago. And at that point, it had been $50 a year as a base fee. So this would be about twice that amount. And this was the highest amount that we found any other city has had charged, with the exception of Beverly Hills, which basically nobody ever paid their fee because it was over $250 and they exempted most, almost anybody anywhere near Beverly Hills anyway. They're the one that, that achieved about $300 a year in revenue from their non-resident fee. So to me, it was kind of a strange thing that they were doing, but anyway, that's their prerogative. Anyway, we estimated that the annual revenue, if we charged fee at that level with similar exemptions and discounts would be probably in the range of $35,000 to $65,000. And probably actually less than $55,000 because we think it's unlikely that Pacific Grove would contract with us again now likely did before. And we also identified a number of negatives that would result from charging non-resident fees that are described in some detail in the report. But one I particularly wanted to highlight that I think we felt quite strongly about was the negative impact on fundraising by the Friends and Foundation. If we had a fee like that, we think that the loss of fundraising by the Friends and Foundation might exceed the revenue that we received. It's hard to know, but we think that's a very significant issue that, you know, to the extent that we were on the fence at all about the issue, really pushed, I think, most of us over the edge that that this could actually be counterproductive. We actually might lose money by charging fees when you take that and all the other negatives into account. So for all those reasons, we concluded that the potential revenue would be outweighed by the negative impacts of charging non-resident fees. And the committee therefore recommended against instituting non-resident fees. And instead recommends that the library board focus on other strategies for generating revenue and reducing costs. And some of those were, were mentioned in the funding committee report last summer that, that I think Inga intends on getting back to some of those revenue ideas in particular. And of course, we've already reduced the budget tremendously. So a lot has already been done in some of those areas. So after we completed the draft of this report, we shared it with the city manager and assistant city manager. Because we wanted to see if they saw any holes in it or had any suggestions or, or input. And, and we had a good constructive meeting with them and they did have a few suggested revisions, which we did incorporate in the report. And then they took another look at the revised version, which is the one that was presented to the, presented to the board today. And have expressed their concurrence with the report's conclusions and recommendations. And I see Matt is here, so he can perhaps add any further comments that he or perhaps by extension, Hans might have on the, on this report. But that's kind of a long introduction to this item, but it's a long, long, complicated report. But that concludes my presentation and I'd ask Marsha and Inga to add any further comments they may have. And then we'd be glad to respond. Any questions from the board or the public on this important issue? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jim. I just wanted to add that, you know, one of the summary numbers that struck, that struck us all, I think, is that they said non-residents have been contributing about 37,000 a year or 36% of that total contribution to Monterey Public Library. And when we talked about the amount of revenue that we would get, it really does kind of cancel each other out. And, and the other piece is those of us who have long memories and remember when Monterey was charging, a lot of animosity. People would come in and ask, why is it that I have a paper library card? I have a business here. My children go to school here. It, it, it got kind of messy. And so that would, that would require a lot of exemptions. Oh, you'd have to exempt all the schoolchildren and then you'd have to exempt people with businesses. And it just got so incredibly complicated. Plus the ill will, we spent a lot of time trying to build up goodwill in the library. And, and then the third issue that is, is in here somewhere is the one about equity. The state of California is really wants all libraries in California open to all residents of California because some libraries, they don't all have. They don't all have the same collections and they want people. No matter where they live to have the same benefits of the library collection that everyone has. And the state has been trying to encourage that and that's. Charging charging fees flies in the face of that. So those were just the other the other pieces that I wanted to point out. Inga, you have anything to add?
Well, I think that I was persuaded by how much staff time it takes to implement the policy. And as I researched it, it was fascinating to look back through the minutes of the Board of Library Trustees. To see the discussions that were had once the fee was in place, you know, every few months it seemed there was. A proposal to add a new exception list. Let's, you know, include friends and foundation. Friends members shouldn't have to pay and let's have volunteers not have to pay. And then. The amount of time it took staff to implement that policy, just it was. Longer and longer because they would have to say, oh, you want to get a library card and you live in Marina? Do you happen to volunteer here? Do you happen to be a friend? And they'd be like, no, what's the friends all about? What's volunteering all about? You know, it'd become this very lengthy conversation and that was a. And then, of course, some of those conversations didn't go very pleasantly. So it was a big time drag for staff. So that was.
If I if I could just piggyback on that comment, while we're looking back in history a little bit. During part of that period, I was the assistant city manager. I had a role similar to what Nat currently has. And at the city manager's office, we received a number of complaints about the library fees, the non resident fees. So I spent a certain amount of my time dealing with customer complaints related to this very same issue and I remember it very clearly.
Well, one of the, and I'd like to ask Nat if he has any comments, but I just wanted to say that one of the things that came out of our discussion with the city manager's office is that. We would try to focus on getting more people who 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 use the library to join the friends. And in that way to become donors that, you know, we're we're much better off trying to raise. Raise money voluntarily from the people who can afford it than trying to hit up everybody from the cities around us. Particularly people of less income who can't afford it to join the library. So that's another. That's another way to look at it. And it seems like that's what we're trying to do here. Nat, did you want to say something? And then Mary Jane?
Yeah, happy to. Well, first of all, you know, kudos to Jim and in the subcommittee for putting together this very detailed report, eighteen pages is. Very thorough, a lot of analysis and and we're grateful that. That this is a topic that all of you had had a chance to explore and and we agree with the the conclusion at the end of the day that. It it really is not not a good solution to the challenges. The reason to back up a little bit and maybe run a little context on why we even were exploring this as an option, I think is. Is an important piece of it, too. We 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 talk about fairness and and it is it is a challenge how libraries are funded here in Monterey County. And how that compares to the way libraries are funded in other jurisdictions. Now, I I serve on grateful to be this year, first time serving on the. Community Services Policy Committee for the League of California Cities, which represents California's four hundred and eighty two cities. And the focus of the Community Services Policy Committee are programs, community services like recreation programs. Parks and and libraries. And it's interesting to see out of all the fifty committee members, almost who who are on this this group, mostly elected officials. Not one of them felt that, and I had to bring it up, felt that libraries was library funding or library issues were. A problem or an issue that even had to be addressed at the committee level. And the reason is the majority of cities in California don't provide library service because there's dedicated funding through. County property tax or through a JPA or other type of organization. So that that's that's our challenge. We we have a commitment and a responsibility as the City of Monterey to. To fund the library appropriately and to make sure that there's services. But but the reality is, and especially during a pandemic period, the the challenge is real and it's and it's and it's big. You know, you know, I'm gonna, before I get off my soapbox, I have to share with you again. That the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we hoped would come to the rescue and and help fund cities. And help restore our library budgets. Didn't end up supporting us the way that it was it was branded and it was supposed to. And quite frankly, it's a little. It's 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 a hard pill to swallow. When you look at how we've been affected as a city due to the pandemic. You know, thirty four million dollar loss and we get six point four eight million dollars. That's nineteen percent recovery. And then, you know, you compare that to a a community that needs it, and I've mentioned this before, you know, Watsonville. They're estimated and and a friend of mine's their their manager over there and, you know, one point eight million dollars is their estimated COVID loss. Their ARPA funds, they're going to be getting at the end of in total by the end of the year here, eighteen point eight million dollars. In COVID funding. So there last week, there was a conversation with the city managers. Other cities are saying, what do we do with all the money? Let's pull the money together and and do some great things with it. We can't afford to give a single penny of it because we need to keep our libraries open. We need to keep funding the hours. But when some cities like Delray Oaks are are good friends over there. Are getting two hundred and twenty one percent of their COVID loss back in ARPA money or Salinas, five hundred and twenty five percent. Or Seaside, a hundred and fifty nine percent. Or Watsonville, which we calculated is one thousand and five percent of COVID loss in terms of ARPA money. It really tells you that 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 things aren't equal. And that there there isn't fairness. Even Anaheim, which relies a lot on on tourism because they have a pretty high population, they're getting seventy percent back. Of the hundred and fifty two million dollar COVID loss, they're getting back a hundred and seven million. So this is kind of a long, long way and. You know, I'm I'll I'll get off, get off my soapbox as I as I usually do here at the library board meeting. It it's really the the big picture of, okay, this is not a solution to our our challenges, but long term. And we're grateful for the outstanding work of of Mary Jane Perna as as an example. And and her fundraising efforts and and the rest of the Friends and Foundation, because the Friends and Foundation have really been critical to. Keeping keeping things going and helping supplement the very little funding that we're we're receiving and aid we're receiving. As a city through general fund dollars, when when other communities like like Seaside and Marina. Don't have a library budget because the county provides it and there's already dedicated property tax funding that goes to that. So. So, well, we hope that this is a good reminder that. Non resident fees may not be the right solution, but continuing to promote memberships is is a great way to to bring in funding and. Looking at other long term solutions, maybe in the future, there can be a regional approach to to funding libraries through a parcel tax or other other means. But again, grateful for all the the outstanding work and appreciate all the time that that the team has put into this very thorough and outstanding report.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
It's such a small point and it feels, I was hoping to sneak it in before. Which is just to say that I think the number is sixty, we have sixty seven percent more friends than last year even. Or sixty five, can't remember. I haven't looked at that number recently anyway. So the trajectory is going the right direction. Of course, that's not a gigantic moneymaker, but it helps in letting people know that we're here for larger gifts. We're here to be thought of when people are making their state plans and so on.
Thank you. Other, Harish?
To our comment and then a clarification I want to ask. My comment is, I have several friends who live in New Monterey area. Who prefer to go to the Pacific Grove Library because coming to NPL on lighthouses is is not fun. So they go there. So I I think the bilateral part that we're talking about, we use theirs, they use ours. This is fair now. What I was looking for is a clarification on this, the bullet list that we have on page twenty. About the last second from last about the fees. Having negative impact on equity, diversity and social justice. Now, I can understand equity part. Because some can't afford as much, but I'm not sure about how it affects the diversity and social justice part. And I'm thinking specifically about how we we're all paying, we all are required to pay car registration fees. And that's not seen as anti diversity or anti social justice. So I'm just wondering where that came from. I can share the screen if you want to.
Yeah, I think we all see it.
Well, I I I can take the first cut at that and then maybe Marcia and Inga can can amplify. I I think our thought there was that. I mean, taking the most extreme, we have a large customer base that are homeless. That are basically very, very impoverished and other people that are very low income. And and if you have a fee, especially if it's like a hundred dollar fee, that I mean, many of them. Couldn't dream of paying that amount of money. And so they they would just couldn't couldn't participate even if they wanted to. And so it would have a negative impact on low income people, regardless whether they're homeless or just low income. Their ability to use the service. And and I think that's, you know, that was in my mind, what we primarily what we meant by that, but perhaps Marcia or Inga can amplify that.
No, I I think that's good. And and these are people who probably may not have cars. And they're they're in Monterey, they can't say, well, I'll drive to Marina and use their library, you know.
But then we also thrown in diversity. So I was just thinking that. Is it just all things go together by as one unit or, I mean?
Well, I think some some of this, you know, with a large, the the largest single segment of the non resident users by jurisdiction is Seaside. And that's a very diverse community. I mean, there's a lot of blacks, a lot of Hispanics. And, you know, it could be viewed by some people and that was actually one of my concerns about this and I think probably the whole committees. Is that some people, people of color. There's a history of some resentment towards Monterey that goes back many, many years for a lot of different reasons. And part of part of our concern was some people would view this as as a way to hinder. Certain people from using our library. And and so that's kind of, at least in my mind, that's kind of where some of the diversity concern came from.
This is true. And the the city of Monterey is, from what I understand, does have a. Is developing an equity, diversity and social justice plan, as is the library, which was part of our strategic plan. So, you know, part of that is how can we serve all people? And not not make people feel like they're excluded from the library because of. Who they are, where they live, or where they're, what their economic circumstances are. And the other? Okay, so. Bob, I'm sorry.
I just a couple of quick things I, as everybody else has, I want to commend. The committee for such a comprehensive and well laid out, well organized report. And, I mean, you you could really almost get it all without the details by reading the two page summary at the end. And that really does a fine job of. Describing for me, if you, I mean, we know from the beginning that there were going to be pros and cons and benefits and expenses and. You know, to this, how you answer this question, but if you look at a teeter totter and every time something. Oh, that's a benefit of charging and it goes this way, there were more the other way on the downside. And when when you come to the final end, the. Things we wouldn't want greatly outweighed the few possible potential maybe. Benefits that we would get had we, if we were to institute. Fees and, you know, the it's, you know, you look at the numbers and the dollars and all of that. But it's it's some of the more, not intangible in that they're hypothetical, but. If you look at the the second page of the summary and all the bullet points there, we lose so many. At the state and regional level of partnerships and goodwill and collaboration. And as Nat pointed out, you know, part of the whole idea of libraries is that they're working together with a common purpose. And to serve the community, not just their, you know, within the boundaries of their city, but. More broadly, and that we would actually become ineligible to be part of that. Movement or collection of of libraries all the way up to the state. And to me, that would have been. Enough right there, even if you didn't look at the dollars and cents that you would or wouldn't gain. And so. I would like to move to approve the recommendation from this committee as presented in the report today.
Okay, do we have a second, Harish? Okay, and I think we need other comments before we move on.
Yes, for public comments, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you'd like to join by telephone, dial eight three three. Five six eight 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 six four and then. Dial nine star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Okay, so. Moreau?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elga?
Yes.
Joshi?
Yes.
Yes.
The, before we move on, I I just want to mention that one of our motivations for being so thorough. Was so that this wouldn't keep coming up. So that twenty years from now, when we're all gone. Matt is gone, Inga, everybody's gone, somebody says, oh, I have a great idea for the library. Let's start charging. Somebody can go to the filing cabinet and pull out this report and read it and it won't happen again. So. And or or they can make decisions based on this report. But anyway, we wanted to do it once, so it didn't have to keep getting done over.
I just wanted to thank the committee because it's, of course, for me professionally, it's. Pugnant to consider charging.
Yes.
But that's not an argument, that it's not a sufficient argument. And so just to look at it from all different angles. Was so helpful. So I think that the committee really broadened. Broadened the case that I would make, which is simply, you know, we don't do that as libraries. We are open to everyone, you know. Instead, having all these good data and so forth really, really helped. So thank you.
We did try to make the report balanced, even considering the fact that some of us. Hiding the fact that some of us may find it pugnant to 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 go into it with an open mind.
Exactly.
And I think Jim really helped us do that and that was really.
Yeah, so kudos to the committee.
Yeah, I would agree. It was a great committee and I'm I'm proud of this work product and we had some very extensive. Discussions, I wouldn't quite say arguments, but we we discussed the pros and cons of many, many of these issues for hours. So. It was a well, well thought through report, I I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to the quarterly report on the library director's work plan.
Okay, so this is the first. Report that you're receiving after the work plan was adopted in January.
Start on page forty of your.
Thank you. And so, just to remind you, the work plan is arranged under the five categories. That correspond with our strategic goals and initiatives for the library. And then under each. Goal. We had a number of things for me to work on and so I've brought you up to date on on. What's been done so far. So under. Organizational excellence, for instance, staffing reorganization, we knew that was needed. Especially in this financial situation that we find ourselves in. So. especially in this financial situation that we find ourselves in. So I proposed new staffing model and we discussed it as a board, you discussed it, and that's built into the budget proposal that's gone forward. Under library management, one of the things that, I wanted to make sure all the staff were clear about what the vision of the library was. And so that's been communicated in writing, so we can refer to it. The core staff meet once a week to bring each other up to date on, on what we're doing and discuss how different projects might impact each other and, and share suggestions for how to, for instance, we had a meeting this morning and Kim was sharing what she's working on for summer reading. And Mary Jane was making some suggestions about good ways to promote the summer reading program. So we have those kinds of conversations every week to keep each other up to date. It's hard to check in with our part-timers because as the, as things go with part-timers, usually when they arrive, they're on the desk, or when they arrive, they're answering the phone. And then when, when their shift is over, they're out the door. And it's, it's not quite the same environment, but I'm making a effort, concerted effort to check in with each of our part-timers as well. Fund development, you've heard about the successes and some of the challenges we've had with fund development, but mostly successes. So that's moving along. And with promotion, I'm really happy that one of our hourly people who's answering the phone is also working on our newsletter so that we're able to send that out twice a month on a regular basis. And I think that we're seeing real results with that. There's always more ways to promote and I'm grateful to Nat and Lori Welga. Nat is always reminding me that the communications office is available for us to help share things. And communications office Eric Palmer has been doing a great job with our Twitter account and posting to our Facebook account. And Lori includes things that I share with her in, or things that she takes from our newsletter in the COVID-19 newsletter that she sends out. So they've been really great to work with and we plan to work with them more. So that's one of the positives that comes out of having a really tight budget is you develop stronger partnerships with folks who can help you out with things. Under revenue generation, nothing to report yet. But that's definitely something that we can scratch, charging for library cards off the list. But one of the things that is sort of simmering on the back burner is this idea of setting up to issue passports, because that is something that libraries have done. And we have somebody on the city staff who has been involved with that in a previous position in a previous library. So that's one of the things that we'll consider, will continue to consider, especially as things open back up again and as people start traveling more. Diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. So as you know, in our strategic plan, we said this, we wanted to create a plan for the library and draft a plan for the library. And that's something that Kim Smith and Francesca Garibaldi were working on. They started off by taking class together as a part of a team. And so that started in, in January. And then we also want to make sure, and, and they're both aware of that, that the city is preparing to roll out a training and as part of the plan that they're working on. Then, under digital strategy, well, RFID is underway and we'll give you more of a report on that in a later agenda item, but that's off the ground, going off the ground. Exploring core technology needs, well, we know that we need to streamline our public printing options. So that's something that Kim is looking at a couple of different vendors to find out what they suggest. So it was included in our fiscal year 22 technology request. We don't know if support from ISD is going to be something that is, continues into next year's budget for looking at printing solutions, or if it's going to be something that's got to be dropped off because there are lots and lots of requests for ISD to support the different departments. But anyway, so we're looking at, at what the costs might be for a different solution for printing. Because that is something that a lot of customers before we closed were really struggling with. And so you always want to look for what are the real time-consuming things that people really struggle with? Well, we have fewer staff, so let's see if we can get a good solution in place, not only so they have a better experience, which is of course ultimately, we want them to have a better experience. But also because that's something that you'll free up your staff time if you've come up with a better solution. And content management system, that's something that actually Nat could talk to us about. And at some point, we'll need to have a presentation about the new content management system. So it's been selected, David is on the team that meets. And I understand there are a few different options, hmm, mockups or something for us to look at at this point. And we've charted out what pages we feel need to be on our new site. And again, Lori Welga and Nat gave us some really good feedback from non-professional librarian kind of look at what might be, make more sense in terms of how we clump different things together. So they've been really helpful with that. So we've got the new roadmap and that the whole project is moving forward. It's very exciting. Digitization of archival collections, nothing to report yet at this time. I'm really excited about to, doing more of that, but we are probably not going to be able to make much progress until we have a full-time librarian who is in, working with me on local history things. Learning and literacy programs, well, we have, we had developed a whole outcomes evaluation system and then had wanted staff to implement it. And now that, now we are having the staff members use the form. So that's a good thing. Getting that up and running. And so basically, it's a way to organize your thoughts when you're planning a program, you know, what is it that we're trying to achieve? How do we know if we've achieved it? And then after the program is over with, to go back and say, okay, what, what were the lessons learned? Did we meet, you know, our goals and so forth? So. Or having staff work on that. Preparing the bookmobile for reopening. So, so far, we've requested funding for that. But we don't know yet what the budget will hold. And the bookmobile is up at the maintenance yard. It lives up there right now because there's no reason to have it just right across the street from us and it's safe up there. And so it's, it continues to be on its regular maintenance schedule. So we're hoping that it'll be ready to hit the road when we're able to reopen it. In terms of electric vehicles, that's on pause right now. But something we're interested in, a welcoming space for all. Well, I'm working on a reopening plan with staff and we'll be bringing it to you in May. And looking with David and Kim and other staff members at how we're going to reconfigure our furniture to have our desk be more suitable for promoting the self-checks and having fewer staff members available at a time to help the public. And library renovation, well, I, I had a really interesting conversation with our police chief and our fire chief and a consultant, ABA, who's, some of you may have, may remember having met before. And after that meeting, we really haven't gone any further with that. But we all really liked the idea of having a plan and working on a plan together that, that lists our priorities. So that's something we want to work with the city on so that, you know, I don't open the paper and say, what, the, you know, fire department is getting a new building, but I'll say, oh, yes, you know, fire is getting a new building because our, our, our plan is first comes fire, then comes library, then comes police, then, you know, or something like that. So we, we have an organized plan because we know we can't all have renovated buildings, you know, instantly or at the same time. But we want to have a plan together and we're all on the same page together. So that was a, a good step forward there, I thought. And then keeping the collection current. And as you know, we've talked a little bit about the funding that we've received so far because the budget had been zeroed out. And so we're getting some good support there for adding new materials. And the MOBAC shared catalog project, it hasn't moved forward. I think every time we try to have a meeting, several of the library directors just are too swamped. And so, but we all have it on our back burner. We want to move forward with it. So that's all I had for the report on the status of my work plan, but I'd love to entertain questions or comments.
Jennifer, you have a question?
I just wanted to comment, I think it's amazing how much with such small staff, so few resources, how much the library is continuing to move ahead and improve and continue to offer services. I mean, I've been through some lean times. I worked in libraries when Prop 13 passed and it was hideous. And by comparison, I see what your staff is able to accomplish and what you're able to do. And I'll tell you, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Other, other comments? Bob?
I think we all know that it'll take more than we are receiving now from the city in order to even entertain, let alone act upon reopening the library. We're not talking about discontinuing any of the services, as Jennifer pointed out, that we are really doing a bang-up job providing with such minimal financial support. And so I guess, you know, prior to the, our May meeting, it will be interesting to compile a plan that not just takes into account unlocking the door and letting the public walk in, but everything we all have to do once they are allowed in. For example, you know, July's not that far off. So if we're saying, well, beginning of the fiscal year, there still may be, and we may want to have, even if they're not required, Plexiglas partitions. There may be limitations on where within the building we allow public to go. And what, and if the public's allowed to meander around anywhere, that means there's that much more area that might need to be cleaned up. And then I mean that in a pandemic way, not because they're going to, you know, dirty the place and leave garbage behind. But, you know, all of these different things that we don't have to worry about now. If we do, then it's going to take financial support in order to say we are not just open, but we're safely open. And so I agree with Jennifer that the library is providing an awful lot, even in a way above and beyond what you might think was possible, given the, the funding that we currently have. And I just hope that, you know, we, we, we stay within our means. And as much as I'd like to have the library reopen, part of the plan might be not open every hour that the library is offering services, but some parts of the week are like it is today, and other parts of the week, smaller in number, therefore costing less than we need to spend today when they can come in. And so, I mean, there's a lot of stuff of that nature, of an operational nature. I think that we really need to pay a lot of close attention to, but so far, not just so far, so good, so far, so really good, in my opinion.
Thank you. We'll be having a much more extensive discussion on that in the, at the next meeting when the, start talking about the reopening plan. But I also wanted to add that I thought this was a very well-written report and really reflects that you, you know, looked carefully at the strategic plan and that you've really been moving ahead on, on all these areas considering the resources you have. It's very impressive. Harish?
Yes, I just want to add to what Bob was saying, that in addition to all the things that you said, if we're required to maintain a maximum occupancy limit, then that'll require even more staff time to ensure that everybody gets a fair shot at coming to the library. And that's just one more thing to add to the things that we have to do.
Jim?
I, I just wanted to echo some of the other comments that I thought Inga did a very good report. And it's making a lot of progress on a lot of things with very limited resources. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other comments, other questions? Well, there's no vote on this, so we can move forward to our next report.
It might be worth asking for public input.
Okay, Jim, public comment?
We're open for public comments. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're calling in by phone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and enter meeting ID one six zero three oh one three three five seven pound. And then dial star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, no comments. So we move on to item seven, which is an update from the ADHOP RFID committee.
I wanted to make one more comment about, because after Harish's comment, trustee Joshi's comment is in the orange tier. Actually, libraries no longer have a capacity limit. They can be at 100% capacity. So we don't have that issue.
And it appears that no more quarantining is around the corner as well.
So we have reduced the number of days that we're quarantining materials and looking forward to the day when we can cease that altogether. But so we, but we have been looking at potentially keeping some rooms closed. And that will be in the report and possibly even not reopening our meeting rooms to the public yet. Just because that's another layer of management, even though that's an important service, we want to focus on really the core services initially and try to do those well. Okay, so RFID update. Well, we have completed tagging the book collection. And we're nearing completion of tagging the AV materials. And then meanwhile, our encoding carts arrived. So, so first of all, because we didn't have our encoding carts, we were just putting the stickers on all of our materials. Now we have to go back through and scan the barcode of the material, put it on top of a, what are they called? I forget what they're called, but it's a pad. There we go. It's a RFID pad. You put it on top of the material, press the computer screen, yes, and then do the next one. So it's very repetitive, but it's basically encoding all of the tags so that the tag recognizes the barcode of the item. And then last week, we had a site visit and trustee Joshi was there during our site visit. And the representative from the company that we're working with measured our doors to make sure there are different ways you can install the new security gates and wanted to see which. and wanted to see which options were the ones that we wanted based on the dimensions of our entrance and exit. So, uh, we looked into that and then also measured the area where we're going to have our smart bin. And that's where, when people return things, they push them through a slot and then the item is instantly checked in. So it's sort of a baby step towards, uh, automated materials handling. But automated materials handling is still our phase two of our RFID project. And, um, uh, the, the representative also helped us load the software onto some of our, um, desktop PCs so that we can use the pads and we can start encoding materials as we're checking them back in. So, uh, that's where we are. And we had a meeting with our, uh, team leader who is in Australia, uh, this week. And she said, next week she'll, uh, provide us with an ETA on when the equipment will be arriving. So that's the, the gates and the smart bin. And then, um, we'll be talking about the, uh, app that we're all going to be able to put on our phones so that, um, we can check things in using our, um, they work, it's supposed to work on all smartphones. So the, the person who visited us wasn't sure about iOS. And I'm like, no, it definitely works on iPhones as well as the other kinds of phones. So that's where we are with that. And, um, I'll turn it over to trustee Joshi if he wanted to add some things about the project.
I have the question about the smart bin resolved. It was talking about doing a building change, has to move the whole, which is not, you know, not, not as easy as you think.
Right, so, uh, we, after, uh, retaking the measurements and so forth, we think that if we just remove on the inside of the slot where you return things, there's a sloping board. And, um, so if you want to push something up against it, it has to be lower than that board. And we're going to take that board off and then push the cart up against it. And we think it's, it's going to work just fine. One of the reasons-
It's going to be building construction or reconstruction.
Right, right. That's our current thinking, but it'll, we'll need to get that cart to make sure. And so we would like to have it sooner rather than later. Um, that when we chose the smart cart, the other option was to actually have a smart slot where you return things. But, uh, I decided against that because I didn't want to have to open up the wall and involve construction people. And then, you know, you have to schedule it and, and is their timetable going to work with yours? And then there's the cost. Um, so we went with a smart bin instead. And so we're hoping that we don't have to raise the height of the slot. Also, it's something that kids really enjoy using. And so we don't want it at a height that then the child can't reach up anymore to put the things in. So-
One thing that I'm troubled with is that somebody has to actively monitor the bin getting full. That I wish that all, all the technology we have, that it could just say, set an alarm saying the bin is ninety percent full and that we somebody has to manually check it all the time.
Hmm, so we do have, it's in a staff kind of, uh, thoroughfare. And then we have, um, three staff that have their desks back there. And so, uh, before we had a smart bin, we often had people assigned to be checking things in, but they weren't sitting at that check-in station. They were sitting at their desk and just keeping an eye on the bin. So it's, it's not something that their staff are unfamiliar with. It's just that the nice thing is when a staff member does have to go over and, and deal with a bin, there'll be fewer steps involved in processing the returns, which is nice.
So I, I just had a question. Do you, do you have any sense of the time in which the, the system will be operational? That is, the, the gates in, the, the encoding done and-
Well, I have told them repeatedly that we are needing all of this before we reopen. And so they said, oh, yeah, July, no problem. And I've asked, how long does it take once you're ready to ship our materials? Oh, it just takes a week or so. So it seems like we're not going to run into any kind of problem with having it in place by July.
That's good. Um, Jennifer?
Yeah, is the company providing you any kind of instructional materials, uh, for patrons? Do they have like a little video that you could put up on the library website that talks about it and promotes it? Do they have any kind of templates or any kind of handouts or information like that? That'll help educate the public on how to take advantage and actually use the technology?
That's a great question. Of course, they have videos on their website that promote the company and say, yeah, we do. And, or if you want to see the different products, they show you, um, here's what our smart bin does. Here's what our patron app does. But I don't know if they have developed anything specifically to help us teach the customers. That's a great question. I'll ask them that.
Yeah, I used to work for a vendor and we always had, like, training staff that produce materials to assist libraries with that. So ask, they may have something on it that they've already developed.
Yeah, great suggestion. Thank you.
Uh, Jim?
Uh, just a comment and a question. Uh, the comment is, congratulations on getting so much tagging done. Uh, obviously, there's a little bit more to do, but it seems like you've made major progress. Um, and the other piece of that is, I, I don't quite understand the encoding, how big a task that is compared to the tagging. In other words, to, is, does encoding take more time than tagging or less?
It takes less time. Uh, David anticipates that it takes a third of the time-
Oh, great.
-to place the tag. And, but the, the challenge is, is that we only have, well, we only have two carts. So only two people can be encoding at a time and we're making another cart. So we'll have a third station that we can use. And then we can also encode at a couple of staff stations. So we're trying, you know, we're, we're just right now working on how many stations we can get going and then who can do that work. So it's a little different than, one of the reasons we got through this so quickly is we had just made an appeal, thanks to Kim, for volunteers and had been overwhelmed with a number of volunteers who responded. So we had that pool that we could draw from and it's, it's been great having our volunteers. And some volunteers have been really great and then they've had to step down. But that's fine because then other volunteers have filled in the void and some people may still be volunteering. Um, but, uh, so that's partly how we went so quickly with the tagging.
So in order to encode, you need a pad. Can you do it with a laptop and a little attachment? Or do you need a whole machine to do it?
So we can do it with a laptop and then we have the pad, which is actually, uh, fairly large. Um, and then, uh, we need a scanner.
I see. So that, so the bottleneck is, uh, the scanners and the pads? Because I'm sure you can press laptops into service, people can bring them around.
Right, and so, and we only bought a certain number of pads because eventually we, you know, we, we were trying to be as, uh, frugal as possible in identifying how many places we would actually be doing check-in and check-outs. So, so, um, that's why we have a limitation there. Yes?
One more quick question.
Sure.
Hmm, you said that when material comes back from Pacific Grove Library, we'll be doing the tagging for them. Are we also going to be doing the tag initialization for them?
So, yes, because the idea is, from our public's point of view, we want it to be as seamless as possible for them when they're borrowing materials. Luckily, with our hybrid self-check machines, um, it's possible that they won't even need to know whether they're using the tag or the barcode when they're checking something out. But just to, to speed things up, if they come to the desk, for instance, we just would like all the materials to be, um, encoded with text. I can encode. Yes?
Bob?
Yeah, you, you mentioned, uh, how crucial and valuable it was to have, uh, volunteers helping out in, but feels like the first phase of this big process. Now that you're moving into a, a different level or second phase, um, do you still need volunteers? Or can you still use volunteers? Or is the work so different that volunteers can't fit in?
Well, we can still use volunteers. They'll be doing something different. And, and one of the things we've found is the carts that we've, um, that we're borrowing from the company are too wide to fit down our aisles because our aisles are spaced, um, at a slightly different standard, uh, for ADA than, uh, people are using in modern times. So, so we're having to load up a cart of books, take it over to the cart and then a person operates the cart. And then that cartload of books has to be resold again. So that's one thing that volunteers can certainly help with.
Uh, any other questions?
You have to use those wide carts? You can't use carts that are narrow enough to fit through our, our, our aisles?
Well, David is building one, as he mentioned, with a laptop and a scanner and a pad. And he's going to see how, how effective that is. And then once we know, we, we might build some more. But the one that, the ones that they, um, are lending to us, all the stuff is bolted down. So we can't really reconfigure it. There are areas in the library where you don't have, like in the teen area and the youth, uh, picture book area, where you don't have, uh, aisles. So we'll be able to use the carts there.
Yeah, the, the ones he made for the, for the tagging were, were very good and he had a lot of them. But this is different. Okay, uh, if, if we have no other comments on that, um, do we, I guess we need to take a public comment on this one too? Before we go after-
Sure, yeah. If there's any public comments, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
No comments. So we will move on to, uh, the financial report. And we have a little, uh, the, the, those of us with the printed packets, these, this one cut off a little bit, but the one up on the system was fine. So if you're reading it from-
So I have a printed packet. And when I heard the comment, oh, I think some fields are missing. I'm like, no, that's, that's all there is. But on my printed packet, it printed landscape. And I understand people picked up printed packets that are-
That were, yeah, that were portrait, yes.
Portrait.
On the system, it's correct. Except that it says as of June thirtieth and it really, we really meant as of, uh, March thirtieth, first, right?
Correct, but I did, I did go into the report. When you're, um, looking at it in our software program, Simpler, you can actually click on these, on the different numbers and go into more detail. And, and none of them included April numbers.
Okay, so it was just a, uh, heading, heading error.
And I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I experienced the same problem of the far right side of the chart getting cut off when I downloaded the agenda packet, uh, and, you know, and saved it so that then I wouldn't have to print or ask to have printed all these pages. But then when I go to look at it on, uh, my laptop or my, um, tablet, the right hand is chopped off whether I flip it around and make it, um, landscape or not. So, I don't know.
Uh, I, I think on, if you look on it on iSearch, it's fine, but you're, as soon as you download it, yeah.
That's why I've been looking up in this way all meeting long, is I have another computer here with a giant screen over my right shoulder. And so that's why I keep looking up and you're right, I can see everything on it because I've, uh, logged on to iSearch for it.
We will-
Next, yes, next.
Next time we'll do better.
It's technical issue, yeah. And I'm not sure that's-
Jim?
Jim?
So, I, I certainly concur with, uh, it'd be wonderful to get this printed in, um, in landscape in the future editions. Uh, but beside that issue, um, I think we may have talked about this last month, but I wonder if you could refresh my memory on the revenue report in the general fund, the thirty-seven thousand, uh, negative, uh, budget amendment. I, I, I don't, I don't recall what that was all about. I think we might have discussed it, but can you refresh my memory?
Sure, so, um, there was a mid-year, uh, budget review and amended budget that was adopted by council. And there was an error here where I think that, um, I had been asked to look at our revenues and I realized we weren't, of course, collecting fines. And, uh, things like, well, mostly fines, I guess, in the general fund. But I also reported that we weren't going to be collecting some monies in the museums either because there were no sale of-
Oh, that's right.
-the books and so forth in the, in Colton Hall. And all of those monies got put against the library's general fund revenues instead of going against, um, museums. And then I asked to have that corrected, but it hasn't been corrected yet.
Okay, I remember now. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, and we only look at, we look at this every month, I think.
Yes.
We can, we can, uh, for, when we look at it next month, it'll be straightened out.
We hope so. Although, there, it takes a little, a little time for finance to make some of these corrections. They're, they're operating with far fewer people these days.
Well, does anybody have any, uh, questions or comments on what you can see? All right, um, so let's move on to the, um, the statistical report. Um, so this is like, you want to say something about this report? This is slightly different than, uh, the, the reporting fields are slightly different than we had before, or?
They are. No.
No? Any questions or comments on that? Yes, Jim?
Uh, just one, one comment. Um, the benchmarking committee, um, had three tasks before it. One, one was the comparison with other libraries, which we completed last month. Um, two was the non-resident fee report, which we completed this month. And the third thing was, uh, looking at our internal benchmarking performance measurement types of data. And this is certainly part of that. And what I wanted, and we're currently working on that now that we finished the other two legs of our benchmarking committee's, um, task. And so I just wanted to, um, encourage any board members to let Inga know if you have any suggestions about changes to the, uh, data, anything that you, um, either find confusing or that you don't find useful or that you know that you would like to see that's not part of this. Because we're going to try to, uh, make some revisions to this. And we also want to chat with, um, Nat and get his perspective on some of those issues as well. So I just wanted to highlight that that's something we're currently getting, starting to work on and would welcome any feedback from the, uh, board members if you have any thoughts about the, uh, statistical report, the items in this statistical report.
Yes, it seems like, uh, a very good idea to have a sort of standard body of reporting metrics that we look at, um, and regularly. And, and, and decide what interval we want, do we want them annually? Do we want them quarterly? Do we want them monthly? So that's, those are the kinds of things. So that's, those are the kinds of things we're going to look at. Any, any comments, questions? Okay. All right. So we now move on to our closing item, which is trustee comments. So we can start with, we usually start with, Bob, you want?
I want to, number one, throw out a kudo to Marcia for the letter she rewrote that appeared in today's issue of the Weekly. Well done. And I saw the original and I, I'm not sure, they don't have them side by side if they abridged it any or not. I think they probably did because it doesn't feel like it's quite as complete as what Marcia shared with me. But anyhow, good job there. And then I want to throw out a gigantic kudo to Mary Jane for page nine. And yeah, I have it in front of me and if we were meeting in person, I think I would run up and ask you to sign it so I could have an autographed copy. But, but this is, I mean, it's, it's, the layout is attractive, it'll gather people's attention. The purpose of it and the descriptions of the situation that we are facing as a library trying to cope with everything that's been going on is clearly laid out. And it also invites the public to be part of the solution, which is, you know, really maybe going to be one of the most essential things that comes out of this whole thing. But a gigantic kudo to Mary Jane for, for this and not just because it takes up the whole page, but every square inch of the page is worthwhile. And so thank you, thank you, thank you.
I know that this, this trustee comments, but I need to clarify that I don't deserve much thanks except for the fact that it is a full page. Because this is really Diane and Doug and Bill and our trustee designer. So, but one of my bits of input, when they were discussing it was like, no, go big or go home. That we have, there's an anonymous donor who is willing to help underwrite the costs. And so I, I, I did hope that they would take the whole page and they proceeded that way. But all the thanks are there. So you can put credit there.
Well, I would just mention too, that, you know, there, there are some, let's just say organizations that we see in the Monterey Herald over and over and over again. And sometimes it's a full page and sometimes it's just a big section of a whole page. But it seems like they are there frequently. And if there's any way that a scaled down version of this could be presented repeatedly, whether it's in the Weekly or in the Herald or somewhere else, not necessarily every day or every week, but repeatedly so that it's not out of sight, out of mind. I would say that would be a good investment.
Let's see. Jennifer, any comments?
Just again, thank you to my fellow board members and to library staff for keeping us going during these tough times. Thank you.
Great. Harish?
I'd like to report on the Friends and Foundation Board Meeting. They did splendidly well. The Monterey County gives, the target was 40,000, they actually raised 47 and funds are still coming in as I remember. The total was 67,000, out of which Monterey County gives was about 50,000. That far exceeded our target. The chocolate and wine raised only about 3,000. And we used to raise a lot more in the past because we used to have the silent auction and the balloon pop and all those raffle things, which we're missing in this one. So considering everything, it was in keeping with what we get from the, the chocolate and wine part. And we've been working, I say we, but I just, I'm the liaison, remember I paid full credit for reporting it. We have been increasing our members and now we've seen a 46% increase in members of the Friends and the Foundation. So that's the number I got from the last report. I remember Mary Jane said something about 67, that's not the number I have, but. So yes, things have been going good. There were some reservations expressed in the meeting that some of this generosity we might be seeing is because of the pandemic and we really don't know if next year we can expect the same. We'll see.
Thank you.
And I think Harish, they also mentioned they're going to have a book sale this Saturday, right? On the back patio? Remember that?
Yes.
Yes, at the same, right across the street from the anti-Asian discrimination demonstration, which is at 11:00 at Colton Hall. You can, you can do both. Okay, Jim, comments?
Yeah, just briefly, I, I just thought today's was a very good board meeting and I wanted to thank my fellow board members and also Inga and the staff for all the good work that went into it. And also particularly wanted to thank Kim for doing a little extra, making these meetings work. So thank you for facilitating the public input as well as other parts of this meeting, Kim. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
This is trustee comments, but I wonder if, did we want to have? Sometimes we have the staff comments and we didn't ask Nat if he wanted to make some general comments as a representative of city staff.
Sure.
Thank you, Inga. Just very quickly, because it was brought up with regard to the, the ad in the Weekly. I thought it was outstanding as well. Thank you trustee Petty for acknowledging all the great work of the Friends and Foundation for that. I will share that, you know, I, I really tried, we got that, I got a phone call a couple of weeks ago from one of the new reporters from the Weekly, Chris Neely. He's a, he's a great reporter, has a lot of experience from Austin, Texas, reporting on their city hall. And really tried to focus the article on how many services and how positive things have been. Not, you know, the sky is falling, but we're, we're the first, like we talked about, first to provide services, doing outstanding job. But I, I know that as some of our journalists like to do, they like to spin it a certain way. And I, I, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to see the, the article was, was kind of put it, put a light in more of a negative tone. I know the library is going to be closed and, and the sky is falling. And I, I think that the library's response, both Chairman Rowe as well as the Friends and Foundation was, was truly a really good positive message and not only a plea for funding, but also talking about the great services that, that the library is providing. So I wanted, I wanted to acknowledge that and, and share that, that feedback. And we'll get through this, this, this little bump in the, in the road. So appreciate all of your support with staff and, and of course, Kim and, and Inga and the whole library team.
Thank you. And Kim, is, is there anything you'd like to add? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think in some sense, that article opened a door for us. So, you know, no, no, you know, it sort of motivated us to, to jump in and it, it, you know, it spearheaded, you know, what, a bad thing turned into a good thing. Because when, when it looked like no plans to reopen, the library isn't doing anything. It just prompted a, a big response and I think in, in the end, it's going to turn out to have been a good thing. Even though it didn't seem like that at the time. So that's good. But I, I also wanted to just echo everybody's thank you of the amazing job that the library skeleton crew is, is doing. And, and, and everybody's positive attitude in this, in this time. And, and, and also the board's positive attitude. I think it goes a long way. We're all in this together and we'll all get out of it together. And maybe we'll all be stronger for it. There, there are good things that are, are coming out of it, even though we may not have wanted it to be this way. So this is great. So if there are no other, I forgot to call the order, we do have our little. Meeting adjourned.